I will call to order the Select Board meeting for October 19th, 2021. And I will read the following announcement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. So I note the town is recording. I see Harbor Media recording. Is there anyone else who is recording the meeting this evening? I see no takers. So the first item on our agenda is scheduled for 7:05, and it is not yet 7:05, so we cannot take up the first item. Tom, is there a reason that we're putting that a time on the first item on the agenda?
Yeah, because it had to be a posted, a posted public hearing. Sorry about that.
That's okay. No problem.
Trying to think of what other one might be quick.
No, we can.
The designation of naming by Law Committee members, maybe?
We'll stick to the order.
Okay.
You know, there's some of us would want to talk about how the Red Sox are doing. Even though that's not a posted item, I think there's general public interest and support on that topic.
I mentioned I'm standing up watching the game, which is why I have my.
Yeah, we have to be done by eight.
That's right.
A little after eight, but yeah, we'll do our best.
It's a good thing Kike Hernandez doesn't live in town. The three of you might be in trouble for your seats.
Let me see here. So for the first item I have on my list, Scott and Emily, are they? Are they here? I just want to make sure that we're seeing them.
Hi, Joe. I'm here.
Here as well, Joe.
Oh, okay.
Joe is here as well. He's going to take the lead tonight.
Hey, Joe, it's Jeff.
How you doing?
And Tom, the lucky Big Poppy doesn't live in town. I watched after the game last night. They had him and Alex Rodriguez outside of Fenway when people were spilling out. It was, it was excellent. I stayed up an extra half hour.
Did you see his dance?
No, wait.
Big Papi's dance went when, after the grand slam?
No, I did not.
No, that was pretty, it was pretty cool. Yes.
He's, yeah, he's, he's got staying power. They said, they said, oh, we may have to get a security detail to get A-Rod out of here. And Poppy looked at him and he says, don't worry, dog, I got you. It was great. Great moment. So good.
So for those members of the public tuning in, we need to wait till 7:05 to start our first item on the agenda. We typically do not start with the Red Sox summary, although tonight hopefully will be a special evening. I will say just, it's almost 7:05. It's 7:04. Last night I was at the school committee meeting, and those works, those folks work incredibly hard, incredibly diligent. I tried to interject some Red Sox comments. There was no chance because they, they had so much on their agenda. In all seriousness, I was just blown away at the dedication of that group. It's, it's, they pour their heart, soul, and all their effort into improving our schools. So it's just, it's great. Anyway, I believe it's now 7:05. So I will start. I've already read the introductory, introductory message. So the first item now is to consider the request of Range Hingham LLC doing business as The Range, 306 Whiting Street for alteration of licensed premises. So who is here to discuss Home on the Range?
Home on the Range, Joe. I am Jeff Toccio for Range Hingham LLC. Scott Golding from my office is here. He, he can put up any exhibits or, you know, help as I need. Jim Bristol, I believe, is here somewhere. He's one of the owners. And Will O'Connell, the manager of the LLC, couldn't make it this evening. He had something, he offered to kind of get out of something, but we, you know, we basically thought that we could, we could do the, do the application to you folks without him. This has already been through both the planning board and the Board of Health. During COVID, we were actually.
Jeff, if I can just stop you, I'm just going to ask a couple of pointed questions before you go on. So I understand that police, fire, building, health, planning, and zoning departments have all reviewed the proposal and they're all, it's all acceptable to them. Is that your understanding?
I've heard nothing negative. I usually don't get positive statements. I usually only get negative comments.
I would tell you the town does give positive statements. And what I've heard is that it's positive in this regard.
Right.
And can you, in a very brief fashion, just describe what it, physically what's being proposed?
Yes, it's physically being proposed. No increase in seats. It's 136 seats. It's been like that since the beginning, and there's no change. What it is, is it's an alteration of the premises to allow for a greater amount of flexing of the seats. What we looking at here is we've got a building with 5,600 square feet that exists recently. 1,200 of that is a private function room, which was put on the back, that can seat up to 55 patrons. Additionally, the patio is out back. We're looking to get a 6,000 square feet of that included overall with the premises. What that does is that fills in a gap between the patio area, which was originally part of the premises, and then there's about 400 feet, which comprises seven of the driving stations. During the OTS process, that was filled in, was very successful. And what we're looking to do is to add that to the flex, you know, basically the flex program. So it's one, let's see, 11,600 square feet of space combined between inside and outside, again, not exceeding 136 seats. We've been through the minor site plan approval was in June of 2020, and also special permit A3, which you know is for the parking. Additionally, the Board of Health approved this in the spring of 2021. And we have a stipulation agreement where we went through, both with the planning board and with the Board of Health, there are requirements with respect to the flexing so that it does not exceed 136 seats. So for example.
Jeff, let me stop because we have those agreements. We, we have the documentation. And so just, just so I'm clear, the goal here is to create a private space for functions, and no seats are being added. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
So Emily, is there anything that you wanted to add on this?
Nope, I think Jeff provided a very thorough summary. And Joe, as you stated earlier, all the relevant departments have reviewed and approved of the proposed alteration.
Great. Bill, did you have any questions on this application?
Just briefly, so if you didn't add any space to Jeff, did you even need a modification of the A3?
Yes, what we wanted, oh, if we didn't add the space?
Well, you're not adding any, any, any seats, right?
No seats added.
I'm sorry, no seats, right.
So what's happened, though, is that we added square footage. So it was an opportunity to go in and get a check on everything as it operated. When it first opened, site plan review in A3s, it predated some of that. So it was an opportunity to bring this into the modern analysis.
Right.
Sounds good. I'm very familiar with the, with the restaurant and the functions up there. No, no, no issues with it. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just one question. The function space, is it, or is it already built?
Yes, so it's built, permitted, and that was all pursuant to those approvals that I just cited. And you've got those, yeah, it came out nice. It's going to be operated as private facilities. So showers, you know, baby, you know, baby showers, things of that nature.
Great, great. It sounds like a nice addition. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Liz.
Does the applicant himself have any comments he wanted to add to this?
No, I think he's good.
His lawyers telling him to be quiet. Okay.
Zip it is the instruction from Attorney Toccio.
Okay.
We look forward to getting this up and running. It's been a, been a long process, but it's a real nice space. And I think a lot of folks that have inquired about doing small gatherings at the range will be quite pleased when, when they are able to start using it.
Yes, and we really do appreciate your efforts and support of the town. So, so thank you. Any members of the public have comments or questions on this application? I see no hands raised, so I am prepared to accept the motion on this.
I make a motion to approve the request of Range Hingham LLC doing business as The Range, 306 Whiting Street for an alteration of licensed premises for proposed function space, including a patio deck. The function space will not increase the maximum seating capacity of 136. This approval is subject to the approval of all town departments, completion of the function space in accordance with the plan as submitted, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
The move in second, we do a roll call vote. Bill?
All right.
Liz?
Hi.
Joe Fisher. Aye, it is approved. Thank you all, and we do look forward to continued operations at the range. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Enjoy the game. Bye, guys.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Bay Copy, a division of Bay State Business Products, Inc., to lease four Konica Minolta multi-functional print systems, including total care for all systems for Hingham Town Hall. Bill and Kathy, who, who's going to be speaking on this?
I can go ahead and speak on that.
Please.
Sure. We are, we're come to the end of the lease, the current five-year lease on the existing units. So working with Bay Copy, looking to get the fleet refreshed and basically the same functionality, three black and white devices, one color, the one up in the Select Board office, Town Administrator Suite. And these units, the only thing we're adding is optical character recognition, OCR. So when a paper is scanned, it'll actually be into a searchable PDF rather than an image PDF, so it's, it'll become searchable.
And, and that's something that, at least for this board, is very important. When we get documents, you know, some of them voluminous, and we're reviewing them, we're looking for certain items, it's a lot easier to do a search on a computer rather than going to page 83 and then finding out that that's where the term is. So the OCR aspect is very important. Could you comment on the energy efficiency of what is going to be leased?
I can take that one, Joe, if you'd like.
Please.
So the good news is, as Kathy Riley pointed out to me a little while ago, the state actually requires all of our state contract vendors to, in this, within Massachusetts, to actually take these considerations into, into account as they build these contracts. So Konica Minolta is certainly keeping up with, with that requirement. There's actually a number of things that do, and if you don't mind, I'll read through it. It'll be quick, but I just wanted you to.
Yeah, please.
And where we're at. So all printers and copiers by Konica Minolta are actually Energy Star certified. Their printers and copiers have received sustainability certifications from EcoMark, Blue Angel, and EcoLeaf. They were the first manufacturer in the industry to use recycled water bottles in the making of their plastic parts of their machines. Their toner bottles are recycled. The, the, their default setting in all of their copiers is to use one, print two-sided to save paper. They actually are certified by Safeway Partners as a nonprofit organization committed to reducing energy emissions. Their factory has been certified as a green factory, and they are a company that has a stated vision of being carbon neutral by 2050. So.
Great. And could one of you comment on the maintenance costs associated with, with, what's being proposed?
Sure, that is standard maintenance, service, care of the unit, so that any issues come up, they're on call, they'll be here, and Bay Copy is over in Rockland, so they get here on site very quickly.
And it's included in the cost? That's not in addition to what's.
Right. Correct.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Tom, for going through the environmental considerations. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Heidi Gall researched that for us today, so she did a great job.
Thank you. Bill?
No questions, just second. Liz's comment about, thanks for reaching out to an environmentally friendly company.
Yes. And any member of the public have comments or questions on this application? Hearing and seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to authorize, excuse me, the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Bay Copy, a division of Bay State Business Products Incorporated, to lease four Konica Minolta multi-functional print systems, including total care for all systems for Hingham Town Hall in an amount not to exceed $56,312.64.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It's unanimous, it is approved. And before I go on, I should have noted for the record that the members at the Select Board participating in the meeting this, this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. So we are concluded with the Bay Copy item. We move to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion and potential vote regarding the project funding agreement from the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Plymouth River Elementary School window and door replacement. I believe I see both Ray Estes and John Ferris here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street. On behalf of the Building, School Building Committee, John Ferris, Director of Business and Support Services for the School Department is also on. This is, if you're familiar with MSBA projects, this is the, pretty much the standard project funding agreement, which is the threshold by which the MSBA commits to fund the project. This for the Plymouth River Window Project, which we hope and expect to complete next summer. This is, you know, pretty much the standard agreement. I believe you have the revised version that reflects you, Joe, as the chair of the Select Board that was sent over, I think, earlier this week.
Yes.
It includes the proposed budget, which is based on the schematic design submission that was made last month. Interestingly, that's, that's the way the MSBA, that, that's how they base their project funding agreements on the schematic design phase, even when the work associated with the project has not been fully designed or certainly even bid. To the, to the extent that the numbers go up or down, you're kind of stuck with what the MSBA fixes the, the budget at. We have, since the schematic design, we have the, the costs associated with the project have adjusted some. There's some increases based on scope expansion, a couple of variances that we did not get, that some ADA work we have to complete, but we also spend some time value engineering to kind of offset those scope increases as well. So we're hopeful that, as of now, we're on budget, we're below the appropriation that was made at a town meeting, and we're hopeful that the bids, which will be published next month and opened in December, will, will remain on or under budget, and we'll have a successful project, at least from an economic standpoint. And with, with that bid publication and opening in December, we expect to be able to award a contract to a contractor for this before Christmas.
And your group is going to be overseeing the work?
That's right. We have, we actually have an orders project manager engaged that was assigned by the MSBA. There's also an architect engaged that was assigned by the MSBA, and we've been working with them, you know, meeting generally about once a month or otherwise as needed. We, we met with them about two weeks ago, and we likely will be meeting again sometime next month with the, with the PRS folks.
And how will this affect operations at PRS?
It, it shouldn't really affect operations at all. The intention is that this work will be performed during the summer months, when the school building is largely unoccupied.
Right.
Some staff, certainly. You know, anyone, to the extent there will be any students onsite at any time, obviously all, all the contractors that will be onsite will be queried, and there'll be appropriate, you know, steps taken to ensure, you know, protection and safety at all times. And the anticipation is that the work would commence after school lets out in June and would be finished, you know, certainly by August.
Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't know if there were summer programs that are typically held there that might, might be impacted.
Not at PRS. Sometimes the rec camp does use PRS or has historically used PRS at times. So we'll certainly make sure to coordinate, you know, with Mark Thorell and his group with any access issues.
Great. Liz, do you have any questions on this?
I just was going to ask about the OPM, so Ray answered that already. Thank you.
Bill?
I reviewed the documents. I have no questions. Thank you.
Great. And Tom, from a financial standpoint, are you comfortable that we are staying within our parameters for this?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any member of the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I mean, Ray, you, you are so vital to this. I really appreciate everything you've done here, keeping us on track and keeping this project on track. It's very commendable. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. It's, it's a committee. There's seven of us, plus John and the administration as well. So it's, it's a team effort.
Yes. So I am prepared to accept the motion on this.
Make a motion to authorize the chair of the Select Board to execute the project funding agreement and all associated documents as required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Plymouth River Elementary School window and door replacement project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It's approved. Ray and your committee, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Rich DeBona on behalf of Vitamin C Brewing for Blues at the Red Barn to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 3:00 to 5:30 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, October 24th, 2021, from 3:00 to 5:30 PM. Is, let me see, do I see Rich here? Oh, there you are. If you could just walk us through what is being proposed?
Sure, so this event is at Ware River Farm called Blues at the Red Barn. It's a picnic-style event where it's a ticketed event. People will be bringing their own food, bringing their chairs down, walking to the Red Barn. And there'll be some blues music being played by the Boston All-Star Blues Band, and there's an opening act to Aaron Hop Country Blues Duo. There'll be a food truck there, Wanda Lust, and us, Vitamin C will be providing the beer. That's the plan, at least. And yes, it's Saturday, the rain date of Sunday. Saturday's looking a little iffy right now, so we'll stay. Sunday's looking good, though.
Good. And you're expecting about 300 people?
Yes, yes. That's what they, that's what they said about that much.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions on this?
No questions. Rich, I know you've done a lot of events there, so thank you. No, no other questions.
Bill?
Yeah, am I correct, Tom, that the chief has signed off on it?
Yeah, so my office, he's not available to come to tonight's meeting, but my office has been in touch with Chief Jones, and he is good with everything.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Any member of the public have comments or questions on this application? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Rich DeBona on behalf of Vitamin C Brewing for Blues at the Red Barn to be held at Ware River Farm on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, October 24th, 2021, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? It's approved. Rich, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda is a discussion on the Sustainable Budget Task Force, and I believe Liz is going to give us an update.
Yes, Michelle's going to bring up the slides.
Can everyone see those?
Yes.
Thank you. So this is our first update to the Select Board. You can go to the next slide, Michelle. Formed by the Town Administrator, as you know, as a result of town meeting in May 2021, the Sustainable Budget Task Force is comprised of these members, Ness Corente, who's from the school committee, John Ferris, you know, the Director of Business and Support Services for the school, myself representing the Select Board, Dr. Gary Maestas, our interim superintendent, Michelle, of course, the ATA of Finance, and Donna Smallwood, a former Advisory Committee Chair, representing Advisory Committee. We also have three liaisons to the Advisory Committee who aren't active task force members, but do come to our meetings so that they can follow along with the, the process that we're, we're working on. So prior to the pandemic, town departments were seeing an increased demand for services that were difficult to address with available resources. In response, the town began developing a long-term financial management plan to identify new sources of revenue, assess service needs, and prioritize capital infrastructure investment while being mindful of the cumulative impact on taxpayers. So as stated in the Select Board's report in the 2021 town meeting warrant, the town currently lacks means to fully fund the budget beyond FY '22. As you know, we, we used $5 million in one-time funds, including the COVID-related federal funds. So the task force was formed to really assess future needs and explore revenue opportunities, including a potential operational override to balance the FY '23 through FY '27 budgets. So that's the kind of the context, how we got to where we are and the group that's formed. You can go to the next slide, Michelle, please. So one thing that we have done already is added a page to the town website under the Select Board, so you can see the link there, the first link under Important Links, which will bring you to the Sustainable Budget Task Force page, which again has the, the member names as well as the charge of our group and a feedback form. So that is a place where the public can fill out the form with any comments or questions. That feedback I am collecting and sharing with the task force on a weekly basis and going through each comment myself. And most are comments and, and different ideas. Some are specific questions, so I am responding to those directly. So this, this just shows the timeline of, in the, the right-hand column, the Sustainable Budget Task Force timeline. So as you know, we started in, in September, beginning the research and analysis. We will continue to work through mid-January, presenting our findings to the Town Administrator and Select Board. And then, of course, there'll be public discussion of, of the budget. And then of course, there'll be public discussion of, of the budget options. But the normal standard budget process will also be happening. So October, the town administrator budget memo goes to all of the department heads. The departmental budgets will be worked on in November. And then the normal ag comm, school budget hearings will happen December, January, February. So those are still public meetings and that is the normal process that will, will be happening at the same time as our work. So we are, we are, you know, really focused on working collaboratively and and coordinating as much as possible so that what our Sustainable Budget Task Force is doing is informing the, the other budget work that's happening at the same time. And the next slide shows what, what we've done so far. So we've been meeting weekly since September 10th. As you know, we had a joint session with the select board, school committee, and advisory committee on September 14th, when the task force was formally announced to the public. We have defined the feedback and reporting out process, so that includes the, the page on the, the town website as well as this monthly report out process. We have been working on a discussion of large impact items and benchmarking. We have been looking at ARPA use of funds and ESAR use of funds in that reporting process, as well as exploring large capital projects. So we've, we created a list of the large capital projects that we know are coming in the next one to five years and the potential impact on the, the debt schedule. And we're also, these are things that we have been working on since September and will continue to work on. So these are certainly in progress, looking at new growth opportunities. We've met with the assessors office and the planning office to, to understand any new growth opportunities in the next five years. Looking at the split tax rate scenario. As, as you know, that's, that's looked at every year to understand if there should be a different tax rate between the residential and commercial. So looking at that as well as analyzing fees revolving funds and grants, both on the municipal side and the school side. So the, the task force has been, has been working really well together to look at and analyze each of the, these fees. So municipal fees, the school fees, as well as the, the revolving funds and any available grants. The group is also looking, researching new non-tax revenue opportunities. And that will be an ongoing, an ongoing process. That's certainly an important piece of this puzzle. We've also been looking at budget growth rates, so understanding historical budget growth rates as well as what, what we think the assumptions are moving forward and looking at budget growth rates of our benchmark towns. So that we can have a good understanding of, of where we are according to, to other benchmarks. And that I, I think is, is it in terms of, of what we've been doing so far. Certainly, a, a lot of work has been done already and, and much of it is ongoing to, to continue to, to, to look at, you know, this, this important view of available revenue and new revenue sources as well as expenditures.
Liz, thank you. I mean, that's an incredible amount of work and time and knowledge that's being acquired. So thank you and thanks to the members of the committee.
Yes, to the task force. It's, it's been a wonderful collaborative experience so far. And we appreciate that.
One of the questions that I've been asked on the split tax revenue is we have residential and commercial. Is it possible to split commercials? So you've got basically small businesses and then larger industrial operations, whether or not they need to be taxed at the same commercial tax rate?
Excuse me. We have, we did talk about that. At this point, I don't think that's an option. But we, we have talked about that and if that would make sense. One, to, to have a different commercial and residential rate, but also if there's any flexibility in terms of that, if we could protect our small businesses. But at this point, I don't think that's an option.
Okay. I mean, that, in the past, when the select board has looked at this issue, the impact of, of splitting it and actually having higher rates for commercial had very marginal benefits on the residential side. And had, you know, potentially serious adverse impacts on the small businesses in downtown. And there, there was a real concern about, about doing that split.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you, that you have identified this as one of the issues. Bill, questions?
Couple of questions. How are we doing with the ARPA funding for applications? Have we been able to get any funds out of Plymouth County? Michelle, Michelle might know that more than you, Liz.
I can answer that. So after the select board took its vote the last week, now we're, we're authorized to move forward there. So we'll be, I reached out, I sent a, a message to John Ferris. He's on the call today. So we can coordinate with the school department about accessing those funds and what might fall under some of their infrastructure categories. That funding is available through FY24, but there is so far about 1.1 million available to Hingham through Plymouth County. So we'll be figuring out what makes the most sense to, to do there, but we would like to maximize every dollar we can get through those sources.
Good. So, so being the liaison at Plymouth County, the ARPA funding is, is tougher. It is not a lot of flexibility in how to use those funds like the previous federal legislation. So, but a lot of it is for capital needs, a lot of school related. So anything, you know, like you said, any dollar we can get, the relative before, we should apply for it. So thank you for doing that. Is ESAR, is that, is that federal funding as well? Yes, I saw an ESAR slide for funding. What is that?
That's the school really. I forget what it stands for, but it, John, maybe if John Ferris wants to say, but those are the school related funds.
Okay. Was, was that, is that part of ARPA, John?
Thank you, muted.
John, for some reason I can't read.
How about this? Is this working now?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's part of ARPA, but they're calling it ESAR specifically. And to be honest with you, where I sit right now, I can't remember the acronym myself. You know, but there was, that was a one, S, a two, S, or three. And it is, I think, part of the overall ARPA, but they haven't referred to that as sort of ARPA money. ARPA is another bucket of money, I, I expect.
So ESAR is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund.
Thank you, Joe.
Great. Okay. That's it. I would just echo Joe's comments too about, we have looked at the split tax rate in the past and the, the the potential benefit to the municipality is kind of greatly outweighed by the detriment to the small businesses. So keep an eye on that as you go forward. But my thanks to you, Liz, and Michelle, John, and your entire task force with the work you're doing. I really appreciate it. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it really is a united effort on the municipal side and the school side. And it's, it's, that's how we're going to achieve success. So I'm really, I'm really grateful for that. Members of the public?
Joe, do you mind if I just piggyback on that just real quick? I'm not a thing of residence, so I need to be recognized.
You're recognized. Go ahead.
I just wanted, that was a very good point, Joe, at the end that, you know, there's a, there's a good mix of personnel that are, folks that are in this task force. And it, it goes across several sectors, right? So we have a lot of residents in there. I think four, maybe five residents. We have a lot of folks from, that work in the school sector, a lot of folks that work in the municipal sector. We have elected officials, we have staff, we have new staff with new perspectives, more experienced staff that know the history of how things have been done in Hingham. And we have the authority of the, the people in the room, in large part have a fair amount of authority to actually implement some of the, some of the recommendations that have come out once all the policy decisions are made. So it's a really good cross-section of, I think, of the organization and the town in general that are working in this, in this task force.
Yep. And, and my understanding, which is not that deep, but with respect to ESAR, is that the purpose of those funds is not only to help with the reopening because of COVID, but also to sustain safe operations of the school. So there's a sustaining element that hopefully will lead to sustained revenue for the town. But again, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how the ESAR funding is going to be proceeding. Any members of the public, other than Tom Mayo, have comments?
It's like Diane Denapley.
Oh Diane, there you are.
Hi Liz, Diane Denapley, 16 Gardner Street, Hingham. Thank you for all your work on this. And this may sound like a simple, kind of a silly question, but so sustainability, does this only include the school budget? And because based on the makeup of the board, will other groups such as the police department or any other department be broadened at some point? Because I think the term sustainability, I was thinking it would be a broader group than just education. Not to trivialize education, but just, could you just talk through how that might work moving forward?
So it, it, it is the entire town budget, so both municipal plus school. So we are, you know, Michelle and I are, we're representing the municipal side. So fire, police, DPW, all of, all of that is included.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, the, this is intended to be a unified approach, not just schools, not just one department. It's true that the school department is the lion's share of the budget. And they need to be represented in this process, but it, it absolutely includes all departments associated with the, with the town. Anyone else? Liz and your task force, with our thanks, go forth. It's a lot of work and we are looking forward to the next report.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider the proposed Hingham pre-precincting plan, which is different from redistricting. It's re-precincting. And I saw Carol Falvey is here.
I am.
Are you going to be leading this discussion?
I'm happy to.
Please, thank you.
So we, as you know, we just went through the 2020 census and we, the results have come in. And as a, as a result, they've told us that we have more people living in Hingham, which I think most of us realized. In fact, we're up over 3,000 people from 10 years ago. And, and so they, the Commonwealth has sent us a, an initial redistricting or re-precincting, excuse me, plan, which does add an additional precinct to Hingham because of, because of our numbers. And we did review the, the first version, which I think I had submitted a, a copy in your packets. And we had some concerns. It was a group of us who have worked on this. Lonnie Fornier, I mean McCracken, and Emily Wentworth, and we reviewed the information. And, and we found some, some issues with how they had put certain neighborhoods and precincts, in particular what was on in, in initial precinct three. So they had streets off of Union Street where people could literally walk to the high school to vote. Areas of Levitt Street and Crest Farm area that were all going to be having to vote at the middle school. So we worked with them. We went back and forth over a period of two weeks. And we've made some changes, keeping in mind that there were certain restrictions. We can only have a percentage change in a particular precinct of under 5%. They were looking for maximum amounts of no more than really 3,600 people, preferably a little bit less in a precinct. And there was, I think there was one of their six, one other restriction. But in any event, so we ended up working with them. We had a Zoom call last week and we came up with this, this version three, which we feel pretty good about. Also includes the Meadows back in voting at the high school as opposed to it having to go to the middle school in an earlier version. So we are at a point now where they want to send us a final map, which would include legal descriptions for all the roads and updated block reports because of the fact they've tinkered with this a little bit. But before we asked for that and not knowing whether we would have the ability to change that, we wanted to present this information to the select board tonight and kind of get some feedback as to whether you think we're at, at the point where we're ready to ask for that final report.
Well, thank you for your work. And the map, is it, is it worth throwing it up on the, on the screen, Michelle? So all can be looking at this.
Current version three?
Yes, that would be great.
I think Lonnie, you're gonna do that? If not, I can pull it up.
Lonnie, you're the master. Come on.
I was gonna say, either way, it was emailed to all of us, so, but I have it ready to go if you want to make me a call.
You are, thank you.
Okay. And so I realize this is, it's a very large map on a small screen. And so I can zoom in as you need or direct. But the important thing to notice here, the, the different colors that fill in the town of Hingham, those are the different precincts.
Yes. So I actually wanted to start reviewing what the statute, what is Mass General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 6, what it requires and what it requires this select board to be considering. And we have to divide the town in a manner that's convenient for voting precincts. So convenience is actually in the statute. To the extent that we're, we want to arrange something that, that anyone here thinks is onerous on our residents, we need to be clear that that is something we should address because we need to do convenient voting precincts. The voting precincts under the statute have to be composed of compact and contiguous territory, which it is. We haven't bifurcated any areas here. They're all, they're all contiguous territories. The statute also says, and I'll read it, "The select shall, as far as possible, make the center line of streets or ways or other well-defined limits that constitute block boundaries, recognized by the US Bureau of the Census, the boundaries of the precincts." So basically, no artificial lines. We use the streets as delineated by the census. And Lonnie, am I correct that the map does that?
Yes, the, the lines are block group or block lines. So you will see some instances where there is a stream used as a boundary instead of a street, but that is all in line with the census, the current census boundaries.
Yep. And then I think one of the important requirements here is that each, each precinct should contain as nearly as may be an equal number of residents, but not more than 4,000 inhabitants. So it looks like, I've seen the numbers and you're real close in terms of the equality. And that's got to be where the plus or minus 5% numbers coming from here. So you're clearly well below the 4,000 statutory limit. And great job in keeping them as, as close as possible based on the number of inhabitants. Let me see if there's anything else. Those are really the statutory restrictions. In terms of access to voting areas, how, how does that work? Because we need to designate a polling area for each of the precincts. Have, are, are they going to be like Linden Ponds is going to be the precinct seven, place where people go to vote?
We will still, we will still submit having a, a substation, substation for Linden Ponds and they will be in precinct seven, under this proposed plan. And so, and I think we would be precincts one, two, three, and four would vote at the high school. And precincts five, six, and seven, excluding Linden Ponds, would then vote at the middle school.
With a substation at Linden Ponds?
Well, the substate, the sub precinct station is at Linden Ponds, but the middle school will be the second voting location.
Got it. Liz, do you have any comments or questions on this?
I don't. Carol, I was just gonna ask you to, to clarify that, where, who is voting where. So thank you. And I know, I know there was, it was specifically called out that Linden Ponds would stay its own substation. So thank you for that.
Bill?
Carol and your team, great job. This looks great. And I, I, you know, when you see the, the color coding, it looks rather simple, but I know with the, with the boundary requirements under the statute and the population requirements, this is probably pretty tough. So it looks like you did a great job and thanks for all your hard work.
Yep.
Our pleasure. That's what. Our pleasure, that's what we're here for.
Yes.
Jody, mind if I comment?
Please, Tom.
So I just wanted to point out to everybody, thanks to the Board of Selectmen in years past and this, some members of this current board, I believe, we have a full-time GIS administrator now who is able to work with us and get these types of in-depth mapping analyses done.
I totally appreciate it.
Great job, Lonnie and Carol.
So I believe the next step, I'll ask for public comments in a second, but the next step, when the board is prepared to vote, we will need to vote on an official description of the precincts. And we also, and our vote needs to include a statement of the number of inhabitants residing in each precinct as nearly as we can determine.
And we do need to go back to our contact at the state to, for him to send us the final map, which this is not, but this will be the final map going forward if we are comfortable with it.
Right, and then we will vote on that map as well.
Correct.
Yes, great. Carol, this is a lot of work, thank you.
Well, thank you, the team effort.
Any members of the public have questions or comments on this? Can you take this off the screen so I can see members of the public a little easier? There we go. Not seeing anything. Eileen, did you have anything you wanted to add? No, I like putting you on the spot, but. Okay. Lonnie, again, your GIS expertise is on full display, so thank you.
We weren't able to do that in previous years when we had these census reports. So it was wonderful to be able to have Lonnie help and the state did an excellent job for us too.
Yes, great. Okay, so my expectation would be that we should be in a position to vote on this at the next meeting, Carol, is that consistent?
That's the plan going forward.
And that is consistent with state requirements for us to move forward?
It is, and they have asked that we submit our final or the vote of the select board by October 30th.
Great, so we'll make sure it's on our agenda for the next meeting, terrific.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is an update from the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. I believe we have Amy Farrell on the line. If I can find you.
I'm right here.
There you are, oh great, thank you.
Am I echoing?
Not for me.
Okay, I'm hearing a little on my own. So I, well. Good evening, everyone, and Amy Farrell, 95 Centristate. And we have a two-part presentation this evening. The first is Kathleen Amonte, who will present the housing plan. And then I will take it from there and provide an update on our activities.
Terrific.
Going to dial in. I'm hearing a big echo.
Amy, did you want to disconnect and then rejoin us? Okay. So who's, I'm sorry, who's gonna take over?
I am, Joe.
Oh great, Kathleen, there you are, okay.
Michelle, do you have our slides?
Yes, just give me one second. Can you see that, Kathleen?
I can see it.
All right.
Go to the first slide, great. So as a copy of the presentation, and the housing plan has already been provided to the members of the select board, I'm just gonna be highlighting the most important points and our priorities identified by the housing plan and obviously leaving some time for questions towards the end. This is the same presentation that we have provided to the planning board back in June and we also did this update to the advisory last week. So what is affordable housing? So there's little a affordable housing and big A affordable housing. The basic rule of thumb for little a affordable housing, in terms of affordability, is cost as a percentage to gross monthly income. So to be considered little a, housing payments cannot exceed more than 30% of a household's gross monthly income. Any household that is paying more than 30% are considered to be cost burdened. Examples of little a units in the town of Hingham include apartments managed by the housing authority or homes sold by Habitat for Humanity. Big A affordable housing generally needs to meet the requirements of majority funder from the construction of the units and/or the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development based on a comprehensive 40B permit. Now, these requirements can include having 20 to 25% of all the units being built to be affordable with rents based on 80% or less of the area median income. So as you can see on this slide here, a family of four living in Hingham in 2021, making $101,050, would qualify for these affordable units. The rents for these units in big A are based on the AMI of the area and not on a household's gross monthly income. This tends to result in a higher number of these renters being burdened by their monthly housing costs and typically exceeding the 30%. And examples of these units include Avalon Apartments in the shipyard or the Cove on Beale Street. I can go to the next slide, Michelle. So as of the writing of the plan, there were 1,005 of the 8,841 year-round housing units in Hingham recognized by DHCD as being qualified for the subsidized housing inventory. DHCD requires municipalities to have a minimum of 10% of their year-round housing units recognized as affordable to qualify for Safe Harbor, which allows the zoning board to deny unfriendly 40Bs. Hingham currently is at 11.37% and is in Safe Harbor status. It's expected the town will maintain the status following the updates to the 2020 census. The projected buffer at the time of the plan was 30 units, which is significant. 30 units of affordable housing offsets 300 market rate units. It's important to note though, that all units developed under a 40B comprehensive permit for a rental initiative are included in the town's subsidized housing inventory, regardless of the affordability for those families. If it's a 40B for a homeownership, then they do not count all the units. Only the units that have an actual affordability deed restriction are counted. So that's an important distinction. Because as we adjust the inventory to remove those market rate units that are currently counted in our inventory, Hingham has 349 affordable units, which represents just 4% of the town's year-round housing units. So although the affordability retention on these apartments are 20 to 30 years out, it's important for us to remain proactive in the creation of affordable units as this is a significant amount of units that will quote unquote fall off our inventory at the end of their affordability period. And again, this is a moving target, each time a unit is added or removed from the town, the math changes. And we've also noticed that due to the pandemic, that both state and federal government have been investigating strategies to incentivize housing production. And although there has been no indication as of right now, but with all the additional scrutiny on housing production within the state, the current 10% requirement could be updated in the future, we just don't know. So it's just something to remember that that number could end up being changed at state level. And the trust is dedicated to adding units to the inventory and we strongly believe that having a range of housing choices makes Hingham a successful community. Michelle, next slide. So some of the key trends that we identified in the plan, for the demographic trends, we're showing a major increase in older residents along with a decrease in the household size. This is being driven by, partly by increasing number of people living alone. For the economic trends, the median income in Hingham is relatively high at $125,441. But there's growing disparities. The median income of owners in town have increased by 69%, while the median income of renters in town has decreased by 3%. As for housing trends, Hingham is a high-growth community with 918 new housing units built between 2010 and 2018. Again, a high percentage of these units are apartments that we spoke of earlier. There's also been substantial demolition and replacement activity in town, replacing smaller homes with larger, more expensive structures. Next slide. For housing costs, the plan recognizes that we are, there are still unmet pressing housing needs despite reaching the 10% state affordability goal. There are a wide range of housing needs to identify, identified based on various income levels and target populations, including seniors, families, veterans, and those with disabilities. Next slide. So there's several tools being utilized by the town to address housing needs. Two of them, just to discuss quickly, is public and private partnerships, such as the homes built by Habitat Humanity, they started building homes in Hingham in the 1990s. The 40B applications for the Avalon Development at the shipyard, the condos at Whiting Lane, and even the homes that were built in Craftson Village on Beale Street. Secondly, the trust uses the Community Preservation Act, which was adopted locally in 2001. The fund generates the resources, as you know, through a 1.5% surcharge on real estate transactions for certain community projects, including affordable housing. Approximately 1.6 million has been appropriated from this source to housing projects between 2003 and 2019. The Community Preservation Committee recommended in town meeting did approve a $700,000 award to the trust for 2020. And it's important to note that this is the trust's main source of funding. Next slide. So development of the study included many diverse resources, including community forums, preview plans and studies were used, along with a housing needs assessment. There was a, there was a group formed, a task force formed that included town hall staff, members from the trust, and there was also, I believe, a member from advisory. But it was a cross-section of folks working on this, along with a consultant. Next slide. So as far as capacity building strategies we're looking at, community education is a priority. And the efforts by the trust are already underway through meetings with neighborworks, the unity council. And we're improving the information that's presented on our website and also by being able to present this plan to the various different boards within town. Next slide. This is just a demonstration of zoning strategies that can be employed. The image in the middle is of Jenny Way in Edgar Town on the Vineyard. It's a model of cottage-style development that could potentially be modified to meet housing needs in Hingham. It was just one of the examples that was provided in the plan. Next slide. And then it just, we also highlight some additional development strategies. Next slide. So the plan discusses preservation strategies. Affordable housing can be difficult to create, so it's important to actively monitor deed restrictions to ensure that the housing remains affordable. Locally, the select board, the trust and staff in the land use and development department work together with subsidizing agencies and third-party monitoring agents, including the Hingham Housing Authority, to track expiration dates of resale and marketing requirements. We don't want to lose sight of any of the units that are on our subsidized, our inventory with the state. So other strategies include adaptive reuse of commercial buildings or properties, small grants or depreciating loans for cost-burdened homeowners to bring their properties up to code or to, you know, even assist income-eligible renters with deposits. Next slide. So this table here represents a summary of the priorities discussed by the plan, the working group and the trust. The plan also identifies the board or committee that would be primarily responsible for implementation of each strategy. So this is, this is a tool that the trust will be using going forward. And that is actually the end of the housing plan presentation. So I will be passing the baton to Amy if she's here and ready to go. Thank you.
I am here, and can folks hear me? I'm technologically challenged this evening.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Kathleen, thank you very much for that presentation. And before I kick off with the chair's permission, I'd just like to acknowledge a couple of housing trust members who are here this evening. I see Kathleen who just presented to us, also Jack Falvey. I see Tim White and I see Nancy Kerber. And all these folks have been, you know, part of our core group and instrumental in the plan. Jack is our new vice chair, Kathleen is also our treasurer. Tim is our esteemed chairman emeritus. And Nancy was instrumental in the creation of the housing plan, so I'm pleased they could be here this evening. So I want to thank everyone for your time on your agenda this evening, we know how busy you are. And we will hopefully provide some updates. So, you know, we want to convey both a sense of urgency with the task ahead of us, the creation and preservation of affordable housing, and also a sense that there is a blueprint to achieve some measurable and positive outcomes. Much of that will be, has been outlined in the executive summary of the housing plan. Much of it will take place over several years and all of it will take the commitment and time and energy of volunteers and also critically staffed resources. I have, Michelle, do I share my screen or do you share and flip? What would you prefer?
It's up to you, I can do either one, I've got your slides.
Okay, why don't I, why don't I do this? Am I sharing it?
Not yet. Do you have them open? And then hit the green button at the bottom.
I'm doing that.
And then select that document.
And I'm doing that, and it's not working, so.
Could you do it?
Yeah, in the interest of time, let's move ahead, so. Thank you, so next slide. This is just a brief agenda of what we'll talk about this evening, and then next slide, please. The master plan, you've just heard Kathleen's summary, but I would like to emphasize a couple of points. We expect to use this housing plan as a blueprint, our to-do list, if you will, and to guide our activities over the next several years. It's worth emphasizing that we're starting at a point today where just over 3% or about 350 of the town's 8,800 housing units are actually affordable. And that's really not healthy for us as a community, which wants to be able to support a diverse range of income and range of residents. To address that housing, the housing plan recommends production levels of 250 units at the town by 2031, and that includes five units per year created by the housing trust. Next slide, please. And so, let's talk about how we're doing. These four properties that were highlighted here are properties that are under management by the trust and in various stages of conveyance or rehabilitation. We expect to see seven affordable homeownership units created from these efforts. And what's, there's some conclusions that are worth noting. I think the first is that it takes time to delever these units, three to four years from the time of site control. In the current heated market for construction work, we will often not get bids on some of these renovations as we're competing with private owners in subdivisions in various parts of town. These smaller units, they do take a considerable amount of staff time to develop the scope of renovations, to issue invitations to bid, and if no bids come in, then to determine next steps. While smaller infill units- While smaller infill units are deemed often very compatible within neighborhoods, the results and the number of units created for the amount of time invested may not be ideal. And we suggest we want to revisit that and develop best practices for the most efficient use of time, both staff and volunteer time. Next slide, please. The Lincoln School Apartments. The Lincoln School Apartments was acquired in two thousand eight. It is master leased by the town through the Affordable Housing Trust to the Lincoln School Apartments LLC. The LLC has a five member board of managers. This is sixty units of senior elderly housing. It is benefits from a section eight subsidy provided by HUD. The day to day property management is provided by a third party, Corcoran Management Company, a well established Braintree Management Company, and the actually part of the, the original developer with Glastonbury Abbey when the property was first converted from housing to school, to school, from school to housing in mid eighties. Part of, this is the asset that frankly has perhaps the most immediate potential for the trust and the town to expand our base of affordable rental housing. We already own it and as Kathleen mentioned, it's actually hard to obtain and create affordable housing as part of any large rehab initiative, which would be expected with an asset of this age. We could evaluate expansion opportunities and leverage our existing ownership. A new capital needs assessment is due and is underway. We'll expect that to be contracted out shortly. As part of the ongoing capital investment, the replacement of windows original to the conversion from the school in the mid eighties is underway. We've received quotes and we're working with town hall staff and town council on the best timing to proceed. Next slide, please. In addition to the assets under care and custody that we've just looked at, the last year has allowed us to also look more closely at our governance. The, as I mentioned earlier, we've benefited from the long time commitment from volunteers. Tim White served valiantly and as the trust chair for many years, I want to say ten. And he has graciously considered to remain on the trust and provide us with historic guidance and institutional knowledge. But this is my first year as trust chair and the first thing I did as trust chair was say, who would like to be vice chair? And then after that, Jack Falvey was kind enough to accept that nomination. And Kathleen Amonte, a long term staff trust member, was willing to step in as trust treasurer. And these, these roles are really important. They form the leadership of the, of the trust so that we can move forward with implementing our strategy. And as just mentioned earlier, that strategy really was outlined in the housing plan. One of the things that, that we've been, the, the trust partnership for the, the trust, for those who may or may not know, was created just prior to the acquisition of the Lincoln School Apartments in two thousand seven, and it was the successor to the Hingham Housing Partnership. And over the course of its history, it's undertaken a wide range of activities from permitting a parcel of land on Beale Street to supporting the creation of housing through one time grants to the current initiatives underway, rehabilitation of single family homes. All of this was accomplished through the efforts of volunteers and over time, it became clear that the housing trust would benefit from some enhanced financial reporting so that at any point in time, a snapshot of its historical financial activities could be easily obtained and shared with stakeholders. This, this ability to do this has become apparent and, and relevant as we went through our CPC application last year. Last year was a year where we had a much more sizable request than in prior years and it prompted thoughtful and robust conversations about our activities and historic activities. So that, you know, those, we took those conversations back and talked about what would make the most sense. And so as we were, were considering that, at the same time separately and on a parallel track, the trust has been fortunate enough to be assigned with staff time, some staff time beginning in late nineteen, early two thousand twenty. And despite a very heavy workload, this professional staff has been able to develop an initial update to our monthly financial reporting template. And with this as a first step, we have some further enhancements that we would like to see, which we are ready to undertake. Conversations about this particular initiative started in earnest in the beginning of two thousand twenty one. You know, just after the warrant was kind of put to bed and just prior to town meeting. And it was at that time acknowledged that the completion of a project of this scope might be challenging for an already stretched staff. And, and so for this reason, we have been in conversations with Clifton Larson Allen, who is the town's external audit firm and also the firm that completes the annual audit for the Lincoln School Apartments. So they are very familiar with our major asset. And what we hope to have them do is provide a, a single historic snapshot of the trust's sources and uses, identifying sources of funding and how those funds have been expended over the course of the last thirteen to fourteen years. We may find some limits in the scope of that work, given pretty standard record retention requirement. But we hope to go back at least five years and allow us to present to anyone who, you know, is curious, but primarily our partners and stakeholders such as yourselves, advisory, planning board, community preservation. You know, this is what the trust looks like. And this is how we've spent our funds and this has been the result. This project, we hope to have completed by the beginning of two thousand twenty two. And again, it's meant to facilitate conversations and support our conversations with our, our primary partners. We are extraordinarily grateful for the time and the resources that's been provided to us by the staff. And it's going to be, I think, a productive result once completed. The next slide, please. So the next three slides will actually be somewhat taken together, but the first slide summarizes our current resources, what we have available to us at this point. And that would total just over a million dollars. And, and the most significant piece of that is our seven hundred thousand dollar CPC award that was approved at annual town meeting twenty one. We segregate our funds into an opportunity fund and a general fund. And this smaller fund known as four ninety nine Cushing, which is a single family home on Cushing Street, which is rented and the income you see there is tenant rent income. The opportunity fund is primarily funded by CPC, actually, I would say exclusively by our CPC awards. And the general fund was initially capitalized in the early days of the trust by some linkage fees from a subdivision completed off Canterbury Street. Next slide, please. And our uses, based on our current pipeline, would be to devote some, complete the developments underway at Road Circle, Central Street, Cushing and Whiting Street and Ridgewood Crossing. We have already set aside funds to purchase that property once it becomes available to set for sale. But there is an estimated placeholder for work that will need to be done to rehabilitate and then make available for sale. And then ultimately listed on the subsidized housing inventory. And those numbers less from the million dollars leaves us about four hundred seventy four thousand dollars. And that would allow us funds available in our opportunity fund to respond to a market opportunity and to act nimbly in between town meetings, which is frankly how we've been funding and using those opportunity resources. Our last two transactions on the market rate transactions in two thousand nineteen and twenty were in excess of five hundred twenty five thousand dollars each. So that's roughly how we've sized what we feel we need to have in the opportunity fund for a single transaction. And then next slide, please. And here you see a snapshot of our August financials, and this is the work that was done by staff on our behalf. It separates our, our cash resources into opportunity and general and Cushing Street, calculated to a total. And then we run through the expenses by property and we are now allocating those expenses to the appropriate funds. This is, you know, a very new template for us and we think it, it starts to provide that much more transparency so that we can move ahead as we essentially continue to ask for money. And so if we want to go to the next slide, please. The next three slides show some of the properties that we are, that are under control. Four ninety nine Cushing Street is occupied by a tenant. Next slide, please. Road Circle is a duplex that was acquired in two thousand nineteen and we are in the process of finishing renovations. And we'll sell condominiumize this and sell this as two affordable units at sixty percent targeting purchase price of sixty percent area median income. Next slide, please. Two seventy Central Street is a home that was originally developed and built by Habitat. And the trust repurchased that when the, the resident no longer qualified from an income perspective. And there is work that's being bid now so that we can restore this property and again, resell it with a deed restriction and and add it to our subsidized housing inventory. And then the final slide is our crown jewel, Lincoln School Apartments. So in conclusion, you know, we have a to do list. And it starts with these kinds of conversations to engage our stakeholders, such as yourself, the planning board, community preservation and advisory, to provide an update on our activities, but also to engage in the implementation, the recommendation of the housing plan. Of the eleven recommendations that were included in the executive summary, six include the Affordable Housing Trust engagement. We hope to finalize our financial reporting to allow for implementation of our housing plan. And we also have some smaller initiatives, which would include due diligence acquisition screening, basically to develop a template on whether or not we should pursue an acquisition. And that is in process now. And then one last initiative is to develop a list of small contractors who we might be able to go to bid on our work. It's been, it's been hard when we have these assets that we're ready to restore and convert and move on to the next when in competing with such a frothy real estate market, it's hard to get folks to bid on our work. So with that, I conclude my remarks. I thank you for your time and we appreciate your feedback. And thanks for driving, Michelle.
Thank you for, for the presentation. You're, you and your group are, are working, working hard and it shows. When the town went through the master plan process, there was a priority placed on affordable housing. And we turn to you and to the trust to, to help us fulfill that goal. I, I just have a couple of questions and I'll open it up to my fellow board members. You've mentioned a lot about the staff. Who, who, who is the staff? So we can thank them.
Oh, our primary staff liaison is Emily Wentworth and she's supported by Michael Silveira. We would be remiss in not acknowledging Sue Nickerson's efforts on our part as she wrangles the munis application to the ground on our behalf. And recently I've had the opportunity to work with Art. And we all know that Tom Meier runs the show. There's not, oh, wait, Kathy Riley, actually, she's my new best friend.
Thanks, thanks to all the staff that you've, that you've just mentioned. The, the numbers that I heard, there was basically, we, the town satisfies the ten percent requirement under forty B. But you were saying that of that ten percent, if, because all rental units in a building, not just the affordable ones are counted, if you got rid of those, we would just be at three percent in terms of what the units that are truly affordable. Is that what I, what I heard you say?
It's just under four percent when you do the math.
Okay. So, I mean, so the legal requirement is, would count everything, but you're basically taking that out. But have you included in that calculation units that are affordable that are not subsidized? Because in order to be on the affordable, to be considered affordable under the state definition, they need to be subsidized. So for example, if somebody builds an accessory dwelling unit on their own and they rent it out at a, that, that means all the, all the income qualifications, it's still not considered affordable because it's not subsidized. So have you considered that area of housing stock when you look at that three percent that are truly affordable? Because you, when you go to the three percent, you've sort of stripped away the legal niceties and you're looking at what's really affordable. And I'm asking, have you included all of the really affordable units?
So Kathleen, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, we're, we've based all of our numbers on the subsidized housing inventory.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have access to know if there is an ADU out there that someone's renting out. And so we're not including them because it would not be recognized by DHCD.
Right. And, and the reason I particularly flagged ADUs, because I think the last slide you presented in terms of the options, that, the tools that you had, that, that's one thing that I know zoning has been adjusted. And there's an effort to move forward with ADUs. All that work will not count in your three percent. In fact, that will be affordable housing, but not under the legal definition because it's not part of a subsidized housing stock. So I, I'm just pointing that out because the numbers, you, you can play with the numbers. We are at the ten percent. And I think we are greater than the three or four percent if you, if you look at all the housing that may not be subsidized but is still rented out and to people in, in circumstances that would otherwise qualify under the income limitations. And I, I want to jump to the opportunity fund, which was the largest dollar amount. And I understand that is primarily from CPC. Is that fund time limited? Does it have to be spent during the fiscal year? And if not spent, does it go away or does it remain with you?
I believe that we will, we have a certain period of time with which to spend it, but it's not a fiscal year. And I know that in the past, the town has, the trust has turned back CPC funds that were awarded for specific projects. So for the selectments parcel, we did return funds back. But you know, I see down in the corner of my screen, Mr. Tim White. So he may have a response on the CPC time limits for awards for the opportunity fund. So I, I can't answer that question.
Okay, but before going to Tim, have, is this a, a noticed meeting for the trust?
Yes.
Okay, so it's okay to have the other members speak. That's great. So Tim, if you wanted to comment on that?
All right. Tim White, thirty five Kimble Beach Road. Historically, the only funds that have ever been returned to CPC was the funds for the selectments parcel. That typically, the CPC contract with the Affordable Housing Trust is a little different than the ones they have with other entities because they're for specific purposes and recognizing the fact that we're, we're looking at opportunities and we don't know when those opportunities are going to come up.
Exactly. So unlike other, other CPC projects, this really stays with you. Which is, which is great because you do, the trust Which is, which is great because you do, the trust needs to be nimble. Tim has taught me that when I, when I spent some time with him as a liaison for that. And so it's important that those funds are available. Let me ask one more question, then I'll open it up to Bill Ramsey and Liz Klein. When the trust secures affordable housing, is it, has it been the trust practice and is it even allowed to give preferences to existing Hingham residents? Or do the housing opportunities have to be open to anyone who applies, even if they're not currently a Hingham resident?
So we will go through, this is where now, is Emily still on the line? Because I will tap her shortly. We haven't conveyed anything in my short tenure as chair. We will establish a lottery and folks will be income qualified. And I think there will be a local preference, but that can't drive the selection. And then I will ask Emily to see if I dug myself into a big hole there.
And, and I'm asking not only for sale, but also for, for rental as well. Emily, are you, are you there?
Understood.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hi, thank you. It, it has been the town's practice and this is typically a joint decision of the housing trust for projects that they're involved with and this board, the select board to request a local preference. The subsidizing agent has to approve it. And there are certain regulations that would limit a local preference being offered to more than 70% of the units. So for instance, the Road Circle property that the trust recently rehabbed, before that sold, the trust will be coming to this board to ask it to co-sponsor a local action unit with DHCD. And in that, they will request that one of the two units be offered with a local preference.
Okay. And Emily, while I have you here, there was some discussion about deed restrictions and they were expiring. Is it typical for the deed restrictions to expire? Or do they continue to run with the land for subsidized projects?
It, it varies by project. The more typical process today is that they be in perpetuity. So more recent deed restrictions, that's the case. There are some older ones where a particular subsidizing agent may have only required a 30-year deed restriction. The Lincoln School Apartments, that's running with the HUD Section 8 project-based vouchers. So it, it varies, but the, the more typical is in perpetuity.
And, and as we move forward, the new ones would be in perpetuity. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you. Bill Ramsey.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, Amy and Kathleen, thanks for the presentation. And Amy, thank you so much for stepping up and helping to lead this effort. Very much appreciated. And all of the work of all the trust members is very much appreciated. That's an important area. You know, and you mentioned it, but Tim White, you know, for so many years. And Tim, you were just such a passionate advocate for affordable housing. And you know, our entire community owes you a huge debt of gratitude. So thank you for all the work you've done and thanks for staying on the trust as well. The only, the only feedback I really have is you, the, the goal to increase 250 units by 2031, I think is a, is a tremendous goal. And great to see it and you will have our total support in trying to get there. So let us know how we can help and please continue the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Liz.
Yes, thank you, Amy and Kathleen for presenting. And thank you to all the members of the trust and all the staff members that you mentioned as well. I know a tremendous amount of work has been, has been going into this and I appreciate, I know you did this presentation to advisory committee and certainly appreciate you doing it again for the select board. The housing plan obviously is, is an important plan and identifies a gap in affordable housing that we know about and is, is very much in conjunction with the master plan. As, as you mentioned, it's one of the primary goals of the master plan. So as Bill said, you have, you have our support. It's, it's an important goal and it's, but it takes a lot of work to get there. So I look forward to working, continue to working with you, Amy, and identifying the next steps. You know, I know we've talked about the Lincoln School Apartments window project and the financial management reporting. And then just looking at the 11 priorities in the housing strategies. You know, we have short-term, middle-term, long-term. So I think, you know, if we can take the next step there and identify priority, further prioritize those and assign a timeline, we can all kind of keep, keep marching forward here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public have comments or questions? Diane. Your hand is up. There you go.
Hello again, Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. Kathleen and Amy, thank you. I think this is the third time I saw it, but it makes more sense every time I see it. So thank you. I have a question. I'm, I'm scheduled to be on the ADU Study Committee. And I sort of piggyback off Joe's questions. I know that's one of your priorities. The slide said to promote ADUs. Could you talk a little about what that means in your world? And are you talking about attached as they are today? Or are you projecting into some sort of detached ADU promotion?
So I'll take a stab at this and then I will phone a friend most likely. But the goal with, and, and to pin, to, to piggyback on Joe's comments is that we want to create as much naturally occurring affordable housing as possible. And if we can do that through amending our zoning bylaws, through supporting accessory dwelling units, the expectation is that these are attached units or part of a, an existing dwelling where the rents that are charged, and I, I think the expectation is that these would be rental units, would not be quite as much as you might see at an Avalon or a larger new development. And that they, you know, maybe they're in an older home, but they, they, the rent charged is lower. And they become, they create an opportunity for people to, to afford a rent and, and in this town. And so what that means for the ADU Study Committee, you know, this then we punt to the planning experts to say just what looks most appropriate for them. So that would be my response.
I mean, I, because I think, you know, from my experience, ADUs not only address some affordability questions, but they really enable families to stay together for, for families to, or for the senior members of the family to age in place. So there's certainly benefits in addition to affordability that are associated. Emily, did you want to add anything onto this? You're still muted.
Yeah, my apologies. I navigated away from the Zoom screen. I, I'll just offer that the, you know, in addition to a question about whether our current zoning, which allows interior or attached ADUs, the housing plan suggests that the town could consider detached ADUs. And as you recall, town meeting voted to create a study committee that Diane will be on to consider that, that very proposal. They also, the housing plan also suggests that the town may consider removing current restrictions on who can live in an ADU. Presently, it has to be family members. So there, there's a couple of different ways to encourage what is commonly referred to as the little a affordable housing, that unrestricted housing that you mentioned earlier, Joe.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing, I'm not seeing anyone. I do want to add my compliments for, to Tim. You were my tutor when I sat, sat with you on the, on this trust. And thank you for, for all your work. And I know it's now in capable hands with Amy as the chair. But I really appreciate all the years of service, Tim. So, so thank you.
Your, your kind words are appreciated.
I think that concludes the presentation here. And thanks really for, for everyone who's, who's been working with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you all for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is to designate members of the naming bylaw study committee as special municipal employees. And I think for this, I'm going to turn it over to Tom. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. I'm waiting for the action. I can't believe people don't want to hear about this.
It is exciting stuff. Come on.
It is. So all, all board members, by virtue of being on a board, people are protected legally from things like liability lawsuits and the like by the town. Just by simple virtue of being on, to an appointed or elected board committee. What, what this, what we're doing today is allowing specific board, board members and positions on the specific boards to be designated something called a special municipal employee. A special municipal employee is someone that actually, as it was explained to me by council, has a, a slightly more liberal application of the, of the
It's slightly of the conflict rules. Right.
Right, right. So what it does is I, as I understand it, is it, is it allows for those special, those designated, those positions designated as special municipal employees to actually represent someone in, in, before the town, whereas they otherwise might be conflicted out. So that's really all it is. It's a pretty, pretty narrow. It does need to be specifically designated. It can't be, you know, often done as it was explained to me by someone who explains, or excuse me, who requests said, said designation, as is the case here with the naming bylaw committee.
So an, an easy example would be that if, if someone was on the zoning board and, and the zoning board members are, are also designated as special employees, they, the conflict law, even as a special employee, conflict of interest would, would prevent that person from representing a client in front of the zoning board. That's not changed. But if they had a client that was, wanted to do a contract with DPW, which is unaffiliated with the, unassociated with, with the work at the zoning board, then they could represent the person with, with that unaffiliated town entity. So that I think is the purpose of, of this designation. So Liz or
Say that much clearer than I did. Thank you, Joe.
Liz or Bill, do you have anything you want to add on, on this specific item?
I do not.
Yeah, Joe, you did a good job of laying it out there. Exactly.
So then I would be prepared to accept a motion for the naming bylaw study committee designating its members as special municipal employees.
I'd make a motion to designate members of the naming bylaw study committee as special municipal employees.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. It's unanimous. Next item is to consider appointing Art Robert as the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator for the town. And for that, I'm going to turn this over to Art.
Thank you, all members of the, of the board for the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening. As you may know, the American was, Americans with Disabilities Act was passed at the federal level in 1990 with the intent of prohibiting discrimination and guaranteeing that people with disabilities have the same opportunities as everyone else to participate in American life. At the local level, the role of the ADA coordinator is to coordinate compliance with the, with the act, as well as to investigate complaints that the entity, the town, is, has in some way violated the ADA. In, in practical nuts and bolts terms, that means working with the disability commission to advise the, the town on policy. It includes coordinating the development of a, an ADA transition plan in self-assessment to point to necessary improvements in the town's regulatory framework for ADA, as well as to identify infrastructure improvements to, to ensure compliance. And towards that end, we've been talking with the state to pursue funding that could, if, if secure and provide grant resources to support the, the creation of an ADA self-assessment and transition plan. Pending your questions.
And Joe, I could just
Please, go ahead.
Just a little background for the board as to why we're proposing this for, to be art and why tonight. The, historically, the ADA coordinator has been the assistant town administrative position. Prior to Art's arrival, it was Michelle for several, several, for what, three, four years. Prior to Michelle's arrival, it was me when I was the assistant. Where we now have the two assistants, Michelle is focused on finance and art and operations. It felt appropriate to move this role to Art.
Yep. And so my assumption is that this role works closely with Mike Clancy, our building commissioner, who really is responsible for enforcing code requirements on ADA accessibilities that, that affairs.
That's correct. It's, it's, it's a complimentary role. Clearly, the building commissioner plays a lead role in enforcing the ADA standard around new construction, as well as significant improvements. Well, what this role focuses on is very much on what the town is doing with regard to its policies, procedures, requests for accommodation, managing the grievance process, as well as looking at infrastructure.
Yes. And it's, and it's, it's, again, it's a, it's a priority for the town. Liz, any questions?
No questions. I'm, I'm excited to see Art take this role and look forward to, to working with him in this capacity as I'm the liaison for the Commission on Disabilities.
Bill.
It's an important role and Art, I know you'll be great. So thanks.
Thank you. Then any members of the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to appoint Arthur Robert as the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Coordinator for the town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you, Art, for stepping up on this.
Thank you.
We're now going to move to the next item, which is to consider other appointments for town positions. And I am going to start with seeing if Liz will make a motion to reappoint Tim White to the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes, I will make a motion to reappoint Tim White to the Affordable Housing Trust effective July 1, 2021 for a two-year term ending June, should be 30th, I think, right? June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. Bill, do you have a recommendation for the beautification committee?
I'd make a motion to appoint Henry Buckley to the beautification committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
It's a second. Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. I'm going to now make a motion to appoint Martha Reardon Buick to the MBTA Advisory Board for a three-year term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye, it is approved. Liz, do you have a nomination for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council?
Yes, I will make a motion to appoint Ed Johnson to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye, approved. And finally, Bill, for the naming bylaw committee.
Make a motion to appoint Victor Baltara to the naming bylaw committee.
Second.
It's a term for life. I mean, moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. It is approved. I would now like to move to the COVID-19 update report. I would now like to move to the COVID-19 update report.
Hey, thank you, Joe. Just a brief update for everyone today, so you can all understand where things stand. So statewide, the new number of COVID-19 cases has been trending downward since mid-September. Hold on. Sorry, thought I was going to sneeze. No professional. In Hingham, the new COVID-19 cases continue to fluctuate between approximately 30 and 50 new cases per 14-day period. For the last several weeks, you'll remember in past reports, we kind of went up a little bit, then we were down a little, up a little, and down a little. So it's fluctuating within that window. The vaccination rate in Hingham is up to 73%, which is compared to a state average of approximately 66%. And if you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in Hingham, so that's people aged 12 or older or older, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents has risen to 86%, which is a great number. Obviously, we'd love that to be higher, but that's a good number. We would also like to remind everyone that masks are a simple barrier that can help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Since COVID-19 mainly spreads from person to person through respiratory droplets, masks reduce the spray of droplets when worn over the nose and mouth, thereby helping to protect everyone around you. So that's the report for tonight. But you're muted.
Thanks. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Liz.
No questions. Thank you.
Any member of the public? Comments or questions? I see none. Then I'm prepared to move forward with public comment. Are there members of the public who have comments on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move to the Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Tom.
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Art.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz.
Just a couple of things. Russ Tierney and I presented to the League of Women Voters last evening on the Weir River Water System. So I know the league will be posting that presentation just going over really the the history and what's happened in the last year. So Russ did a great, great job. It was very impressive. All all that's been accomplished in the first year was very well received. And tomorrow, the Hingham Unity Council is doing their talk on people with disabilities, what it's like to live in Hingham with disabilities. So certainly encourage people to tune into that. Should be a great discussion. That's it for me.
Liz, how can people tune into that?
If you go to the Hingham Unity Council website, you can register for the event. It's a Zoom and then a Zoom link and password will be sent via email.
Great. Bill.
Last Monday, we, the Veteran Services Department and the FFW Legion, Hingham PD had a service to honor Herbert L. Foss, who's one of two Medal of Honor recipients living in town. And just wanted to point out, you know, what a great community effort that has become to honor him every year and wanted to thank Senior Chief Keith German, his department, and all those involved in the service. It was really well done. And it's a nice community event that I look forward to every year. So thank you for that.
Great. Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to echo what I said at the beginning of the meeting this evening. I've been working with the school committee and it's just been so impressive their commitment to the kids in our schools, to the families and to the town. Their work is 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 significant and they're 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 giving it their all. So I'm just so impressed with the work of the of the school committee and and the staff. So with that, I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
And the Red Sox are winning.